For the Board of Trustees, Village of Cambridge to order. Um, let's see, roll call please.
Trustee Rose.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Geller.
Here.
Kumbir.
Here.
Shaffer Weiss.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, if we can stand and I'd like to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, uh, Lisa, the meeting hasn't been properly posted.
It has been posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, hometown bank, and the village website.
Okay, sounds like we're all right.
Bills?
Bills? Is the book signed?
What?
Oh, did I grab the bills? Oh, sorry.
We'll, we'll get those.
We'll get the bills.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, public appearances. Uh, is there anybody that would like to speak for two minutes? Now, we've got a lot on the agenda, but this is your time also, if it's not on the agenda, to share with us any, uh, any of your thoughts. Wednesday, you want to? Come on up, introduce yourself.
And Wednesday, I'm going to apologize, I didn't get back to you, come on up, but, um, your stuff will be on the next agenda, but you can give a briefing of what we'll be looking at.
Sure, I have to bring it off some stuff here.
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Wendy Melendez, I'm a resident here of Cambridge, now I own Amigo Construction.
Oh, okay.
I was being a little late.
Right on time, thank you.
What was your last name? Melendez.
Melendez. Thank you, sir.
Um, I know there's only two minutes, so I'll be brief. Uh, the first, I wanted to talk about three different things that are pretty important to us here at Amigo. The first is I bought a house, uh, two years ago, 214 North, and, um, there's, there's been a little bit of a slowdown in construction, as you guys can probably tell because of COVID and whatnot, so I just wanted to make sure that it's known that we're actively working towards, you know, getting it where it needs to be and livable and whatnot, so I, uh, wanted to just share that with you guys. Um, I haven't heard any comments, otherwise I just, I felt like the community needed to know about that. Um, Amigo Construction is a, a cladding contractor, uh, we do a lot of work, uh, in-state and out-of-state as well. Uh, we've been growing about thirty percent year after year, and because of that, we no longer fit in actually at 404 England Street, and we're just about packed at 403 England Street, which is right across the street, and I've put a picture of it. Um, we, last week we had an open house, we weren't as successful as you guys could probably imagine, I don't know if it's... Trying to hurry up in two minutes.
No, you've, no, you've got one minute left.
And so, um, I guess the purpose of this meeting, and what I wanted to really share with you guys is that we're looking to acquire a couple, a couple lots, the old Melsor site, and then, uh, there's a little bit of an unknown, uh, lot that we are not too sure who it belongs to, and we wanted to, uh, just see if there was any chance for us to acquire, uh, both properties at the same time. Um, in particular, we'd like to be able to stage, um, equipment, and I took a couple pictures.
That little lot, where is it along Highway eighteen, adjac- adjacent to yours?
There's, there's a little lot kind of tucked between where Amigo is and the Melsor site.
The unknown property? The unknown property?
Yeah, there's, um, there's no access to it from any street, it's kind of tucked in the middle.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
Okay, so we're kind of out of time, so how do you want to handle this, Lisa?
Um, yeah, Wendy, I had approached me, I'm talking to our engineer, so I'll be getting some information of what, um, is possible, what's feasible, and we'll have it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Wendy, I do have a quick question. Thank you for coming, this is Chris Shaffer Weiss, we live across the street.
Okay.
So I appreciate you coming and showing the pictures, do you have some kind of estimate? I did notice there were some people outside this morning, kind of talking about it, and...
Yeah, as, um, just a little brief, uh, we didn't get a loan for the house, so everything that we're doing is all self-funded.
Okay.
So it's really taken a lot, a little bit of, uh, longer than anticipated, but of course, no one knew about COVID, so that really slowed things down. Um, we're anticipating to have the house framed before the end of Chr- or before Christmas.
Okay.
That's my end, end goal, and I really would like to have my kids move in here by August, by their next school year, so that's kind of the, the timeline.
All right, thank you. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anybody else for public appearances? Uh, one more, one more, uh, what is it, fair warning or something like that? We're, uh, one more effort, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on. Approval of the consent agenda. You see what it includes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, and, uh, it's got all of the village board minutes, joint review board, public works, audit finance, economic development, energy subcommittee, whatever. Any questions?
Lot to read.
Okay, uh, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries, all right, moving on, into reports. I just wanted to, um, my report today is, is about last Saturday, and, um, I don't know if any, how many of you, well, you were there, I saw you.
Can you put your mask on? I'm the one that has to sit next to you.
Well.
Do you want to switch to someone?
I'll, I will go over there by Chris, I can't talk.
I didn't think you wanted to talk.
We'll put you right there in the middle.
Didn't call me mask mandate, they have to.
It's a, it's a, Carlos sitting next to you mandate.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We can hear you, Barb, we can hear you.
I can hear you. We can all, he, just talk. It's okay.
I had a wonderful time not looking like a stagecoach robber, um, but we had the parade, and we had all of the little hobgoblins and all of the little trick-or-treaters, and they were up at Veterans Park, and I guess they went around that. Chris, thank you for getting that organized and the signage, um, for, or the little, I don't know, warning signs and...
I would be Derek, Derek did all that, he had the duty weekends.
Okay, um, we'll let him know that we appreciated it. Uh, there were two long lines of traffic coming down from the park, and, uh, they were visiting stores, um, there was a horse out there in front of, uh, Cambridge, uh, one of the coffee shops.
The Market.
The Market, yes. And, um, there were other merchants that were out with their wares, and it seemed like it was a, just a wonderful day. I had a number of people tell me that it seemed like Cambridge of old, um, that there hadn't been that many people here in years, um, so it was, uh, it was great, and I know we'll have Halloween this weekend, I don't know if it'll be as much, but, uh, the little trick-or-treaters, and you'll be dressed up like the Tin Man, I don't know how the rest of you are coming, but, um, uh, we'll, we'll look forward to a safe holiday, uh, for our little, little, um, hobgoblins, if that's all right. So, that was my report on last Saturday, I don't know if you all had a chance to take it or not, but I thought it was a, it was a wonderful event, okay.
Let's do one.
Um, I just want to reiterate what you said, it was, as a business person, it was great to see downtown bumping with a whole bunch of ghouls, goblins, and a whole bunch of people come out, a lot of out-of-town visitors.
Yes.
Thank you, whoever, we started a nice tradition here.
Yes. Okay. All righty, I want to move on, library board, um, how were you doing with that?
Ted, were you there?
I'm done.
You're...
Okay, he's done, I have not started yet.
You were there.
I was there, um, Ted and I were there together.
Which library board are we talking about?
The last library board meeting?
The last, uh, what was it?
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth?
Was I still on it?
Yes.
Yes.
You were still on it.
The budget?
Yeah, we talked about the budget a little bit.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're getting five thousand less from Jefferson County than we did the previous years, so they have to try to make that up.
Why is that?
Circulation.
I can't remember.
Well, Dane County decided to just leave it.
Yeah, it's circulation during COVID.
Okay.
Where Jefferson County said, no, there's gonna be five thousand dollars less, and then there were some other expenses, and they went through that.
Yeah, we, Joan, we did a heater somewhere, or, there's a sink that's way away from all the other bathrooms and stuff like that, and they're having trouble with non-use of the water in the water heater, so it's turning kind of like rotten eggs, so. Kind of things we talked about, instead of, uh, having a great big water heater that keeps that water, all that water warm, maybe we should put on-demand water heaters in, especially for that one sink that's way away from everything else.
Right.
And really, on-demand water heater would be just fine for the bathrooms, because there's no showers or anything, there's the volume of water going through, it's, you know.
They were gonna get started on their personnel manual, but they wanted to wait for you.
Right, I, I've spoken with Joan, yes, yes.
I saw it.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you. Village office updates, Lisa.
As you can see, in the last two weeks, we've had fourteen meetings, so that has kept us very busy.
How hey busy?
Um, so, um, Chrissy's been working diligently on the budget, uh, finance has met with that, so the notice will be going to the paper this week for our, um, budget hearing, which will be the last meeting in November. Um, we have been working tirelessly with the attorneys on the, uh, information needed for the PSC for the solar case, um, we'll be talking about that a little more later.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we have just been very busy.
Okay, all right, any questions for Lisa? Okay, moving on, Chrissy, bills?
First round was sixty thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twelve cents. Second round, that was done today, was twenty thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. We get a grand total of eighty thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them up.
I'll second.
Okay, questions of anybody? Fair amount of bills, but... Okay, uh, hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Geller.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Shaffer Weiss.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes, all right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to new business, uh, discussion of possible action regarding a five percent wage increase for two thousand.
Nope, missed them.
Wow, I missed something?
The class B beer.
Class B beer and C wine.
I don't have it online.
Do you want me to read it out? So, item A is the class B beer and class C wine license, eating out enterprises, Millie's Coffee and Eatery at two fourteen, yeah, two fourteen West Main Street, Courtney Sargent is the agent requesting.
This was a recommendation from the licensing committee.
Yep, this is back on Millie's Coffee and Eatery's taking over for the common house, uh, gallery at two fourteen, um, they're simply applying for their class B beer and wine, uh, they submitted their application, paid the fees, everything looks good to go, so, uh, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the class B beer, class C wine license, eating out enterprises, Millie's Coffee and Eatery, two fourteen West Main Street, agent being Courtney Sargent.
I'll second, I'm sorry.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, now where was it, because it's not on mine?
It was eight, eight, so now you go to the wage increase.
Okay, all right. So, I'm gonna say five percent wage increase, uh, for two thousand twenty-two, recommendation from Audit and Finance, I mean, this Lisa or Eric?
Uh, it was Audit and Finance, but we, personnel was also involved, we had a joint meeting, but it was finally at Audit and Finance that we, um, decided, since the cost of living for social security was at five point nine percent increase, it's only fair to try and keep pace with that, so five percent was the closest we could get and still be within budget.
Right, it was also important that that fall through at budget, and we, looking at budget, seems to fit without issue, so we were gonna negotiate that if the budget came back, um, but that hasn't shaken out that way, so we're gonna keep the recommendation at five percent due to increased inflation for the year. So that's where we left it.
All right, and I'll just make a note, that is, for all employees of the village here, with the exception of Lisa. Okay? All right, um, do we have a motion? Anyone wanna make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, though, for the five percent wage increase for two thousand twenty-two.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is money, so I...
It will be a part of the budget where we're formally approving it, so...
You want to just leave it in there then?
We can do a roll call, we don't, or, we don't need a roll call, but, yeah.
Um, okay.
I mean, we can if you want, but we're not spending the money yet, we'll be voting on it formally as part of the budget.
Okay. Are you all right with that, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you can do, all those in favor, aye, I'm saying we don't need a roll call.
All right, okay, um, all those in favor of approval of the five percent wage increase for two thousand twenty-two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that carries. Okay, moving on, hiring of two Public Works laborers, now this is...
This is also out of the joint committee.
Yeah, and then we just had a meeting on this, so how do you want to handle this?
So again, it was, and Eric can take over, it was part of the discussion between the, um, Public Works Personnel, Audit and Finance, and then Personnel did meet today, Director Brenig and I have conducted interviews, so I can pass it to Eric and then to, um, Chris and...
Sure, I mean, again, it fit within the budget, he needs staff, um, and he actually had people applying that were qualified, so that's kind of an important thing, I've been having a hard time filling positions, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, Chris?
Uh, we, yes, we talked, uh, this evening from five-thirty until about quarter after six about, about the, the three candidates, one was a clear, uh, person that, uh, came out, and, uh, Chris wasn't able to be there, but he was very helpful when he was talked to on the phone, and, uh, so we did come up with the other person, so we have two people. So I don't know if that's something we vote on right now.
Yeah, we would, um, take a motion.
We don't have to say names every week.
Yeah, we don't publicly have to say names until we offer those positions and...
Okay, that's what I wondered about, okay.
Yeah.
So, just, I'll make a motion, um, to hire the two candidates that we talked about and agreed upon in the earlier personnel meeting, that was a closed session this evening.
I'll second.
Second, okay.
Any questions before we vote?
Okay. Left it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it carries unanimously.
We will reach out to, um, some of the background check phone calls and then extend the offers and...
Great.
Thank you for making yourself available today, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, I'm gonna move on, uh, the ARPA funds I have on here, um, this year's remainder of the fund, seventy-five thousand, nine sixty-four, and then there's a water project needing a replacement, um, is this, Lisa, you want to talk about this?
So, okay, uh, we got, from this year, we're, we got a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents from ARPA funds, of which eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents came to us this year. We already spent about five thousand on the deer field players, uh, trying to get the biggest number of beneficiaries of this money, uh, we've been going towards projects that would benefit the most, and in this case, uh, water programs are an authorized use of the money, this well filter replacement is about ninety-five thousand, estimated thereabouts, so this will cover a, a big portion of that and also affect, um, will end up on the ratepayers, you know, we hear all the time that, uh, the sewer is kind of expensive, so this is one way to try and keep that cost down, we are cognizant of that, so, um, and then going forward, so next year we're gonna get another eighty thousand dollars, we're gonna try and continue to these types of things where we can benefit the most people.
And how much time do we have before the money is...
We have until twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so maybe we spend twenty thousand dollars or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, we could spend slower if we had to, but this was kind of a, we need the money now, so...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to use the remainder of this year's, um, ARPA funds in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine sixty-four for the water project replacement.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is money, this does need a roll call.
Yeah, it's money, um, okay.
We'd be...
Roll call.
Spending the seventy-five thousand dollars. Whitworth?
Yep.
Geller?
Yep.
Kumbir?
Yep.
Shaffer Weiss?
Yep.
Rose?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, um, that's all I have for...
No. No, I don't, I don't... We don't have the most recent agendas.
Though, item E on the new business is the purchase of the new leaf vacuum for stormwater and public works.
Again, this was a recommendation from Audit and Finance, so, Eric, you guys don't know if you want to take it or want me to?
Sure, uh, we have a pot of money, stormwater funds, a hundred and ninety-two...
Hundred ninety-two thousand.
Available, uh, for this type of purchase, so this isn't coming out of our budget per se, it's just a pot of money that we have. The leaf vacuum, um, is unsafe, and it's from nineteen ninety-four, so it's, it's reached its lifespan of usability. This new unit, um, Chris explained, was a self-contained unit, so it'll suck everything, stay within the unit itself, um, be significantly more safe, the only...
It's a one-man...
It's a one-man operation instead of...
Yeah.
Really?
Complicated thing, yep.
Whoa.
Price tag is, it was a bit high, eighty-five thousand, eighty-five thousand, seven oh seven, we're hoping to try and negotiate down.
Oh, did you get the latest email, the dance was danced?
Did you get a dance? What it going down to?
Eighty thousand.
Ooh.
So the, the old unit was turned in for a two thousand dollar, um...
Credit?
Credit is a strong word, but yeah, charity, um, and that brought the cost down to eighty thousand from eighty-six, so thank you for dancing.
Right, that does mean we'll, we'll have to go pick it up and, uh, deliver the other unit, but it'll save the village...
Are we gonna, are we gonna go pick it up, Chris, or are they gonna have to deliver?
We have to.
We do, we have to.
Does it have to be trailered?
Where's it coming out of?
Menominee Falls.
Menominee Falls.
Can't imagine if they wouldn't deliver it.
I'm going that way this weekend, I'm going hunting.
We have a trailer digging up the move.
That'll be a subtle piece of equipment to go down the road.
It's fine, it's fine.
All right, well, good job, thank you, Chris.
The original price was eighty-five, seven oh seven?
Yep.
So, you know, we'll just have to, when Derek comes back from his schooling, we'll go there and, and deliver that and bring the other one back. Uh, there's still a possibility that they could send a tech with that unit down, so we're still negotiating, and if they can do that, we'll, we'll go that route.
And will this include training, I assume?
It will.
Sweet. Uh, so it, it's a significantly more expensive unit than what it was originally back in nineteen ninety-four, um, considering that was eight thousand dollars, so prices have gone up, uh, but...
It was ten thousand.
Ten thousand, ooh, so it's still quite cheaper, but anyways, this'll, uh, hopefully last us another thirty years, and again, not hit our budget because it's a pot of money that was set aside for this purpose.
Good.
And there'll be some left over in case he has other repairs for other things.
Okay.
So with that, I'll make a motion to purchase the leaf vacuum, um...
For stormwater.
Yeah, for stormwater.
Okay.
I'll start with that.
All right, discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Geller?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Shaffer Weiss?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Now we move to unfinished business.
All right, okay, unfinished business, start off with appointment to committees?
It's us.
Okay. Lisa?
Were you going to, um, recommend Chris Shaffer Weiss for the library board to replace Ted?
Yes, uh, is that the only appointment? Oh, that's right, because that was the only one, we did all that last time.
Yeah.
I, I think Chris would be a wonderful addition to the library, uh, she had a strong interest in our, um, our, um, our program here, and I think she'd be a wonderful, uh, component, I want to also thank Ted, uh, for your involvement and being there, and, uh, that was good. So, I'll look forward, or look to a, a motion for, uh, the, uh, appointment of Chris to the library board.
I will make that motion to Chris with library board.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Withheld? With...
Right.
Whatever, yeah, whatever you're talking about.
abstain.
Abstain, yes, okay. All right, moving on, bike trail.
Yeah, you're doing good.
Well, I'm just, I don't want to march and read on ahead, bike trail.
Full session.
We will be in a minute, um, um, the retaining wall has been finished, um, they are looking to begin the paving next week, um, the rest of the things should be done, they have the flashing signs on order, the foundations will be poured so that when the signs do come in, they will be ready to go in, um, as you see in the packet, we did receive, um, from the Dancing Goat, their conditional consent to proceed with paving, um, that is in the packet.
Okay.
So if we want to allow them to speak, um, the board could then go into closed session to discuss that, as we haven't had a chance to, to discuss that.
Okay, I'll ask the gentleman back in the corner, uh, Dancing Goat, uh, did you want to say anything at this time? Did you have anything?
I mean, I think, uh, you know, the proposal's there, you know, the conditional approval's there, um, the only thing that we really have to say is, twelve weeks ago, we tried to talk about this, and we just would've sent shame on you, follow the rules, build your path, so, you know, if you guys have any questions, we're here to talk, we need to, but I don't, I don't need to draw this out of the act anymore, you don't need...
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's see here. We needed to go into closed session on this, right?
Do we want to just finish up a couple of the other items?
We can.
Before, so that if Gary then doesn't have to shut off, leave, come back for a couple.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move item C, fire commission update, and item D, energy subcommittee update, to right now.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Fire commission update, just real quickly. I have a meeting this Thursday. So we'll be going at it again and talking with them about the three proposals and what they want to do. So I, there isn't much more that I can tell you because we haven't met yet. We, you do know that we're meeting tomorrow night, but that's not about fire. And that's, that's just the town of Kristiana, the village of Cambridge.
No.
Is that tomorrow night?
Yeah.
I was thinking Mark, Mark Cook on something else. So that's my fire commission update. Energy Subcommittee?
I've been out of country for three weeks, so. I'm really helping some going well. I mean, I've been following along. I've been keeping an eye on things. We're in the middle of litigation right now. Our attorneys are working on our own testimony and stuff. So the testimony was submitted from Invenergy on October 7th. There was a discovery request for us at the village. Our legal counsel's working with Lisa on that. And then there's, they're putting the other R pieces along with, I heard there was a draft from Mark Graffers on some of the points that we had discussed that I'll be reviewing with them soon. The other thing I want to mention, you guys asked me last village board meeting I was here, what the current budget we've used so far. It was $14,000. In the last three weeks since I've been gone, we're at about $22,000 to $23,000 or so, looking at the checks that we've cut. The most recent bill that we just approved had about $7,000 for our legal counsel. And I think for Mark Graffers, I've seen like $500 bucks or so. But I imagine through the end of this month, we're going to be probably closer to the $30,000 range. But we're still well within what we've discussed and under at the time being, so.
Is the decision November 7?
That's when we have to submit our testimony on November 7. But the decision is not for 180 days from when it happened, which is. No, of, of 180 days of when they submit, file their CPCN, CPCN application. But I think they filed for extending it past. And I don't think we're going to see any likely decision until like January timeframe at the likely.
They did speed it up too.
They could, I mean, obviously, yes, they can.
We've seen that happen.
Yeah, there's also our testimony. There's the other intervenors coming in at the same time as us, the beginning of November. And there's a couple other steps in between now and then, or after then, before January, when they get into some other steps, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, correspondence? Doesn't look like we've got anything. We've got some upcoming meetings. October 27th, again, that's the joint Village of Cambridge, Town of Oakland. November 2nd, Energy Subcommittee, the 8th Plan Commission, 9th Village Board, 10th Library Board, 16th Energy Subcommittee. The 16th of November, Water and Sewer Committee, and then Economic Development Committee and Public Works. November 23rd, to be determined. And the village board will be on November 23rd. And then just while I'm at it, do we, we just meet once in December?
Usually, yep.
Okay.
On that agenda, we usually have a motion to skip the last meeting.
Okay, all right. So those are upcoming meetings. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items. We've got COVID protocols, and Kate McGinnity is going to come by and give us an update from Dane County. Anybody else have anything that they want to?
Yep, we will be having resolutions for redistricting. That we have to get to both counties. We will be changing law. So those resolutions will be ready. Then I am working on the stuff for the Melster site to, to get some more information.
Okay.
So that will be on the next agenda.
All right, Chris, did you?
Yeah, I, I know that we had a discussion in the last meeting about the roundabout versus the stoplight. And, you know, since then, I think we've had some public comment on it. And I've given it some thought. I'm just thinking that maybe it would be good for discussion again through the plan commission, which I'm not on, but.
The letter has been sent to the state. The board did request that they consider lights.
Lights. That doesn't mean that there will get lights.
No, but that letter has been sent. The decision is that the state, could we discuss it more?
Sure.
Yes.
It's just, it's a, it's significant. I think it would bear discussion. Some more discussion.
All right, so maybe this is something that comes up on planning commission.
Which I'm not on, but.
You know, because I, I agree. I've, I've talked to a number of people that have all expressed concern. Why are we not going with?
You know, I brought that up.
A roundabout.
I voted for the lights finally, but.
Yeah.
I know it's more efficient to move traffic with roundabouts than it is with lights.
Well, what I saw is the village being shut down for six months while this is all under construction.
But you can work through that too, Mark.
Yeah, I know where it's going to work. It'll be PQ. And that's okay. I mean, that's, that's what we want. But I, I think that we did it. I would, I would agree with you, Chris. This is something that probably Planning Commission could look at again.
I think it's something we have to do in conjunction with the DOT or the state. Like, we come up with an amazing recommendation that we all agree with in the entire town. Like a Whoville circle decides we want it. But until the.
Of course, the builders want to propose a.
But until the DOT or the state find the funding or find it in the planning, like, I don't disagree to the conversation, but I feel like we need someone of authority from the state to take in that conversation.